Buddy, it's I call to order the September 29th, 2015, Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting to Order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Yep.
Mr. Gile.
Here.
And Mr. Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I'd like to invite everybody to stand and join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move next to the public forum where it's a time where citizens may speak on any issue not on the current agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I was going to talk today about the true meaning of separation of church and state. And I've pulled out some tidbits here that could be helpful for people to understand this. The separation of church and state is nowhere to be found in the Constitution or any legislation. The early republic welcomed public worship. The church services were held in the US Capitol on the Treasury Building every Sunday. The imagery in many federal buildings remains unmistakably biblical. The day after the First Amendment to the US Constitution was passed, Congress proclaimed a national day of prayer and Thanksgiving. Hanging the Ten Commandments on the wall of the county courthouse, no more mandates of religion than judges displaying the banner of their favorite sports team. But somehow equates to establishing that as a preeminent condition. Our forefathers never sought to evict the church from society. The French Revolution and its official policy of de-Christianization quickly developed bloodshed and oppression. But here, freedom flourishes. Our independence was seen as the elimination of a march toward liberty, not a rejection of America's historical culture, moorings. Our forefathers embraced tradition and left local anonymity largely intact. Here men could and did rise as to the efforts merited. Even non-Christian founders thought religion was essential. None would have wished to upend the very basis for education, law, and culture. George Washington believed religion and morality are indispensable. The phrase "separation from church and state" was introduced by a former Klansman, Hugo Black. Now, he was a Supreme Court Judge, right? He was a Supreme Court Judge. The First Amendment has erected a wall of separation between church and state. That wall must be kept high and impregnable. So, in summary here, I say, so we can't have religion in public meetings and forums.
Right.
It's not a big deal. It's just something that is our right as citizens of the United States of America.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll move it back to regular business. Item number one.
Proclamation declaring October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. They have a report by Sheila Beeson, D-VAC Teen Dating Violence Coordinator.
Welcome Sheila.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Yes, so we're not quite in October yet, but it's coming up fast. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I wanted to take this opportunity today to come and thank you for your support for our Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program, which is what I lead. But really, it all goes together. We try to work with the teens to help hopefully prevent some of this future domestic violence. I do have some brochures today with some information, with the local information, so if you would like that now, or I can give that to you at the end.
Yeah, right now.
Okay, wonderful. So, we created this flyer.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation if that's all right, and then I can talk about our programs and... So, for October, our proclamation is "Whereas domestic violence is a major public concern for our state and nation, and is now the single largest cause of injury to women. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all ages, racial, socioeconomic, educational, religious, and occupational segments of our society, especially children. And whereas children from violent homes are physically abused or seriously neglected at a rate significantly higher than the national average, and have greater risk of alcohol, drug abuse, juvenile delinquency, cognitive and developmental problems, as well as fear, anxiety, and guilt. And whereas domestic violence is not a private family matter, but a crime, the consequences of which reach with devastating effect on the communities, school, and workplaces of our nation. And whereas domestic violence represents a pattern of assault and coercive behavior that will escalate in frequency and severity if intervention does not occur. And whereas public awareness and education about domestic violence are needed, as well as uniform efforts on the part of the government, health professionals, law enforcement, religious organizations, educators, and community associations to address domestic violence through prevention, intervention, and treatment for victims and perpetrators." And then I have, I don't know if you guys read that next part, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, I do, okay. This is what I have. It made you look a little different on yours. Now, therefore, the County Commission of the Saline County hereby proclaims that October 2015 be designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges our citizens to recognize and assist all those that serve the rights and needs of victims of domestic violence. Thank you.
All right, very good.
So, just wanted to bring your attention to the flyer about domestic violence.
Right. Before we move to item number two, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And if you'd come forward, I got the signed proclamation for you.
Sure, thank you. Yes.
Donna, if we could just move item number two then?
Yeah, that's Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program, a presentation again with Sheila Beeson.
Wonderful. So, they kind of go hand in hand, the two brochures, and I have extras for everybody that's here today. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have some local numbers, because it's easy to just keep giving national numbers. But I think sometimes it hits home when we have what we actually serve at D-VAC. It says here, "Number of victims served by D-VAC increased by 13% last year. Number of victims who received safe shelter increased 53%. In our shelter, we can house comfortably 16 to 19, that's including the cribs. We have been using air mattresses. We're having constant calls per shelter. Crisis hotline calls have doubled." And so, partly, that could be due to partly increased awareness. People are recognizing domestic violence and seeking help, so that is amazing. So, we just continue to ask for support from the community, whether that be just referring people to D-VAC, providing material needs that we need for outreach, people that don't live at our shelter, clients, as well as people that live in our shelter. So, if anybody wants to donate, we are always asking for help. We also have volunteer opportunities. We always need the extra hands on board, if you can imagine. So, it's here, "D-VAC provided 15,174 units of service to victims." And that roughly equates to about 15 minutes per unit, basically. So, that could be numerous things. So, like it says here, crisis intervention, we provide counseling, we are trained peer counselors, so we're not therapists, but we are trained, we are accredited for domestic violence counseling, so. Safety planning, that is huge, especially with my teens. We work a lot on that. We provide information. We're kind of a one-stop shop, too. We can help meet people up to other services in the community. We also go to court with our clients, so the criminal and civil court advocacy. So, like we said, domestic violence is a crime. A lot of times, there is charges involved, either against the perpetrator, or even sometimes against our client, but if they are a victim of domestic violence, we'll still help them. Domestic violence or sexual assault. We serve, clients have been involved in stalking, human trafficking, that's increasing in Salina, unfortunately. So, we are seeing some of that at our office, too, and elder abuse, too. And so, we help assist a wide range of people that are in need of help. We, let's see here, we also help with protection orders. We can help fill out people's work for that. We're not lawyers, though, but we will go and we will help assist them fill that out, and that's free. All of our services are confidential. They're free. And we also, let's see here, oh, it says here, "We also provided shelter for 196 men, women, and children last year." So, for that altogether, that was a total of 4,833 nights of stay. So, we're very busy, and we appreciate the community's support. We couldn't do it without them, really, so. The initial reason why I signed up to kind of talk today was regarding my Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program. Like, so that's usually where a lot of it starts. It often starts from bullying behaviors, and then progresses into abusive behaviors during dating phase, and then marriage, partner relationships, that sort of thing. So, I've been going into the schools and working with a lot of our amazing students. I wish I could work with every single student. Sometimes that doesn't quite work out, but that's my dream, that one day we'll have every student reached. So, with the kids I work with, we do awareness campaigns, so that way they can then spread the word through their schools. And so, I brought a brochure today about our services. And so, if anybody is ever interested, whether it be teen dating violence, or anything else regarding domestic violence, we'll come and do free presentations. So, it could be churches, it could be groups of any sort, schools, businesses, we're happy to get the word out, so. And that's about it.
I have a question.
Sure.
I turned 65 this year, so I've been around, it's a long time ago when I used to date, you know, and...
Sure.
It seems like the people that I knew that had problems, it stemmed from their families, that they were abused.
Yes, I see that.
Their parents abused them both ways, and usually, they thought that's a normal life.
Yes, and that's very true.
So, is there any way that you reach the parents on these things and get into those issues?
Yeah, we'll provide information to the students, and then they'll take that home to their parents. Hopefully, it's a little bit less threatening when we provide it, instead of sending home, hey, if your parent is in a domestic violence, here's a brochure for that person, because that could put that parent in some danger, too. So, that's another plus about getting in with the teens. They can then go home.
A lot of these kids just think that's normal.
Yeah, they really do.
That's the way mom and dad were, and that's the way I need to be, and it's a shame.
It is.
I pinched my wife one time, and I've never touched a woman, and that's just the way my parents taught me. You don't... I gave a little pinch on the arm one time. That's my biggest violence.
And we say to the kids, too, you know, what's their...
It was mad.
You know?
Really mad.
We look at things, and yeah, we have kids come to us and say, hey, I'm guilty of this, and we say, hey, are you learning from this?
You know, there's not much, there's not a lot of respect being taught anymore in our, in anything.
Right.
The way our kids cuss in schools and talk and treat each other.
That's a sad truth.
I think there's a lot more problems that need to be started with, besides after it's too late.
I agree. The younger, the better, we're finding, too. I'm actually finding, working with sixth and seventh graders seems to be pretty helpful, too, so. We love to get in, and, you know, sometimes the seniors, juniors, they're set in their ways, so getting through them, we're trying to get through them before you go to college. Here's some things, here's some boundaries, here's some things to keep yourself safe. So, we're still working with the older students, too. We just, we're happy to work with any of them, really, but we work on boundaries and respecting each other, and just trying to build... It takes some time, and so, hopefully, we affect most of the kids, and then they usually, it's like a chain reaction, we find, too, so we're hoping.
Good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Some would say that spanking a child is in this category.
It could.
So, and I realize it can be. You can be abusive, but I also believe personally that spanking a child is inappropriate in many cases. So, where do you, where does your organization stand on this issue?
Well, usually, we work with six, victims are 16 and older. I apologize, I forgot to mention that. We will work with children, too. Usually, we refer to CAPS when parents are having parenting questions. My personal knowledge, I used to work for DCF, so I know it's not illegal. We just try to work with the parents. If they need services, we'll refer them to CAPS for parenting services, but if they find spanking's not working, then they need to do something that will work. And then we just look at it, too, is, are they caught, are they doing it out of anger? Are they doing it out of frustration? Is it actually teaching the child? And so, if it is, you know, it's not illegal, but at the same time, we don't want anybody to be harmed, and so that's our main thing, to look at safety. So, yeah, usually, we do refer, and that's why I love our collaborations. They're amazing. So, everybody has kind of their expertise and specialties, so we're very open and caps working with our parents if they need that help. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Thank you for coming by, Sheila, and I appreciate your work, and good luck to you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item number three.
Resolution 15-2175, North Central Region, Region F, Multi-Hazard, Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Have staff report by Hannah Stamball, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners.
Hey Hannah, I have a question. Did you ever get spanked when you were little?
I did.
Did you get as many as you should have?
I was a pretty good kid.
Okay.
I was the oldest of four, so...
All right.
You know, I've always gotten in trouble for everything.
You just kind of seems like you might have done that kind of, you might have gotten in trouble once in a while.
No, I was a good kid.
Good.
Would you guys like me to read the resolution first, or do the staff report on that?
Staff report.
Okay. And this is, we met with the Commissioners a couple weeks ago in a study session in regards to this. This is a request for approval and adoption of the North Central Kansas Homeland Security F Multi-Hazard, Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Plan. It's a little bit of a tongue twister. This plan fulfills the requirements of 44 CFR Part 201, mitigation planning in the local multi-hazard mitigation planning guidance, and was approved by FEMA on January 25th, 2015. In order for us to become eligible for mitigation grant dollars that may become available to Saline County, we must have a FEMA-approved, FEMA-approved plan, and the jurisdiction has to have had adopted it. This process started back in December of 2012. The Saline County Commissioners authorized for Saline County Emergency Management in Saline County to participate in the regional planning process. The regional planning process began in May of 2014, and we had several meetings, several meetings with individual jurisdictions that were attended, and then other planning partners were engaged during the planning process, for the input and the information that was included in this plan. The plan was then approved by FEMA, and we also did several press releases and surveys to engage the citizens of Saline County, as well as the citizens within the North Central Region in the planning process as well. There were several benefits for us to be choosing to participate in the regional mitigation plan, with the biggest advantage being able to address hazards across jurisdictional boundaries that can affect multiple communities, and the opportunity to network with other communities in the region, an effort to share and address problems and similar concern, and enhance the quality of each community's plan. Although this is a regional plan, it is very important to realize that our county and the jurisdictions that lie within our county never lost their, never lost their identity in this. They were able to contribute their information for their jurisdiction, their needs, their wants, that was included in this, so that's a very positive thing. This plan is, can be found on the Saline County website, under the Emergency Management tab, under the Documents, because it is about 900 pages, so it's easier just to upload it on the website for everybody to view. It is a public document. I tell people that it is an absolutely wonderful history lesson. Anything that you ever wanted to know about anything that has happened in the North Central Region of Kansas, from tornadoes to expansive soils to agricultural infestations, the economic impacts of those, statistics, all of that information is in this plan, so it's a great document. It is very big, and it is very long, but it is a very good document to be able to utilize. The options that you have in front of you today are to approve it and adopt the plan, or do not adopt it. Of course, we recommend the approval of it. This plan certainly does, it's a vital part of our whole entire emergency management program. It is a huge basis for us to be able to use it as references for any of our planning processes that we use, for our emergency operations plan, grants. This plan is very, very important to us. It does assist us with identifying hazards, assessing the vulnerabilities that we have, and calculating overall risk, which helps us for better planning and preparation for anything in our county. Mitigation plans are not a requirement, however, they are a requirement if the county ever wishes to apply for hazard mitigation grant dollars. I know we had a discussion with the Commissioners probably back in July about flood mitigation assistance. If we do not have an adopted, approved FEMA plan, we could not even have the conversation of mitigation funds for flood assistance. So, it is, it's kind of the caveat on all those federal grant dollars for mitigation. There is no budget impact. The development of this plan was staff time, and the cost for the contractor was paid through, by the state, through grant dollars. So, we won't have this conversation again for another five years, because that's when it'll expire if we approve it, but it was a great process to go through. It's a very tireless, very, very, there's a lot of work that goes into it, so I'm glad to kind of get this off of our plate. Just to kind of give you a little history, not only is it Saline County, but all of our incorporated cities within Saline County participated in the plan, as well as our educational institutions, the Unified School Districts, Kansas Wesleyan, Brown Mackey College, the Salina Area Technical College, as well as St. John's Military School. So, those folks all, we have to, we sat down with each one of those individual jurisdictions and went through this, and their portion of this plan, and now we're having to go back to each one of those individual jurisdictions and do the same thing that we're doing here today, is asking them for the final adoption of it.
So, how many hours take you to read 900 pages?
I've read this plan probably about five different times. Just, it's so important to make sure that the information for our county and the information for our region is correct. Contractors do a wonderful work, but they don't live here in our community. They're not here in our everyday operation, so I want to make sure that the information in there for Saline County and for our region was correct. It took a long time.
To what extent do we relinquish decision-making control to federal?
There is, I guess I am kind of just a tad confused on the question.
Well, and I didn't have read the plan, so I don't know, but to what extent does that plan commit us to federal decisions that might override our own?
Okay, I understand, okay. Commitment is kind of a strong word, because the information that's identified in this plan is very particular and very specific to our region and to Saline County. The information that is in there as far as mitigation action items, and what we call a mitigation action item is something that we, as Saline County, or our jurisdictions that lie within our county, have identified as a project or something that we would like to work towards in the future to lessen or reduce the effects that a disaster may have on our community. It does not tie us to it. It does not commit us to it, because I guess probably the best example I can give you is, one of the things we identified as a county was generator power for critical infrastructure. We've got several pieces of critical infrastructure, to include the city counting building here in our jurisdiction, and we do not currently have the generator power that is necessary to keep this building operational should we lose power. We have some, but not all of it. A project like that will cost a lot of money, and we do not have the money as a county now to be able to implement that. However, if we have an opportunity to apply for grant dollars in the future, because we've identified that as something that we want to do, we can apply for those grants. The FEMA approval of this, as far as the federal government coming in, there's really no dictation from their end. It's just making sure that everything that we've identified in here is something that fits in, too, with the things that, the things that they have identified on a national level, federal level, as key, key things that we need to look at, or that a community needs to look at to become disaster resilient. Does that help?
Safe Shelter House.
Safe Shelter Houses, that's one that is very particular with the schools.
Gibson, wasn't we looking at that, at Gibson?
Gibson, uh-huh.
And I guess, kind of like when we have the extremely heavy rains, we've already used that prior. Was that, was we a part of this before?
Yes, we have had a mitigation plan for quite a few years now. This will be, the last plan that we had was developed in 2010, and it expires the end of this year, so this one will replace the one that we had before.
And there's no obligation to the county?
No, no.
And it, like say, that storm that we had, what was it, eight inches that we had out around the county line, and we received about $240,000 because of that, because we were a part of that?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a different program. That was considered a presidential disaster declaration.
Okay.
However, after that presidential disaster declaration, according to the Stafford Act, what happens is, it's required that a portion or a percentage of the amount of dollars that's given back to this community has to be put into a hazard mitigation grant fund.
Okay.
Now, it sometimes seems a little backwards. A disaster has to happen before there's grant funds available for mitigation actions, but what happened after that is that there's a pot of money now that we could apply for a hazard mitigation grant. That grant was opened up, and actually, what happened from that is USD 305, because we had an approved plan, because they had approved it, they put in the letter of intent requesting funds to build a safe room. So, the safe room that is being built right now at Oakdale School is being paid for by hazard mitigation grant dollars through FEMA. And then obviously, then that lessens the overall cost of the bond project through USD 305, because of this particular portion. I mean, it may not be a lot, but I mean, that's a good chunk of money right there for it to be paid for through this hazard mitigation grant dollars. But if we didn't have this plan and they hadn't approved it, they wouldn't have even had the opportunity to apply for it.
And it really doesn't have any bearing on us. When we approve this, it don't hurt or help, like say, the Kansas Wesleyan or anybody else.
Yep.
That's going to tie into the FEMA plan.
Correct. It does not hurt, if anything, it does, it does more than helps us.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very well.
I'm not a, FEMA's not my favorite people. My son lives in Florida, and I see the waste down there on, when they have hurricanes, they buy everybody generators they never used, they end up in pawn shops for $50. And I think there's a lot of money wasted, and yes, we get benefits from it, but it's not free money. It costs the taxpayers, and I'm not a supporter of FEMA, so I just would rather FEMA didn't exist, and they tell us how to, where we're going to build. If a person builds in a flood zone, then they have to fix their house. You know, there are too many rules and regulations, and I am definitely not a FEMA supporter, so I'm not for this adoption.
Further questions or comments?
Hannah, when you were mentioning the other institutions that were part of your plan, did you, did K-State Salina not participate, or did you just feel the mention them?
Because they're part of Manhattan, I don't know if, because Riley County and Manhattan, that area is particularly in the northeast region, I don't know on their plan if they were able to be utilized in that or not. The reason that we were able to utilize Kansas Wesleyan is because of the private institution, and then as well as St. John's Military School, and that's one of the things that was a And that's one of the things that was a great benefit from the last time that we did this, was that those two entities were not involved in the plan.
Oh.
So, this is the first time that they were being brought on board, and that we were having discussions with them.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this issue?
Yeah, Ray Ruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. You, you mentioned that the county doesn't have the money for this backup generator, did you ever get a cost or an estimate on what it would cost for one of these generators?
We do have some ideas as far as cost, fully well knowing that what we have is just a very, very, very basic ground-level cost.
So...
And that's all that was required.
So what would you guess? I mean, is it gonna cost a hundred thousand, a half a million, a million?
We had, we had put in the plan, I believe it was two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. That's probably pretty cheap for a building this size.
Yes, and, and we realized that, uh, but what the requirement was, was just a general baseline, uh, ideas to how much money we would be looking at, fully well knowing that that's probably not exactly how much it would cost.
So perhaps the, instead of accepting a grant to build this generator, why doesn't the county start budgeting for this generator? I mean, every year they take certain amounts of money to pay for it.
For this building? To be, yeah, through the building authority, and have the other entities all help out?
Yeah, I mean, because everybody's gonna be included, you know, like the city, and...
Right.
And, you know, you just start, uh, saving some money. Because we don't need federal money. It's not free money. It's our, you know, it costs somebody some money.
Right. Good point. All right. Any further public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for further comment or action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve RFA one eighty-one dash fifteen, uh, and adopt the Resolution fifteen dash two one seven five, the North Central Region F Multi-Hazard, Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and implement the plan in cooperation with the community partners and other community plans as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes four one. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
You didn't?
Uh, I...
I thought she was gonna call roll on that one.
I just, all those in favor say aye.
Yeah, I know you did.
Okay. Uh, passes three to, three one, one abstention. Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen.
Is there any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, is there any, um, or commission action?
I, I was at the breakfast, but it doesn't matter.
Well, you were, how'd I miss that? Sorry.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does, but...
Yeah.
Easy picks.
I was there too, but I missed you, I guess.
At least you know I read the minutes now.
Yeah, that's right. How didn't you catch this? Oh, you weren't there, that's right, you weren't there, that's right, you weren't there. Or you would have caught that, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve, as amended by Commissioner Smith?
I'll make that motion.
All right, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. Is there any other business that needs to come before the Commission at this time?
I, I guess I have something on our agenda preparation. We really don't know what's gonna happen next week, and I think Commissioners should be more involved in suggesting some things that we need to do. And we need to take just a five minutes every week and say, "What should we have on our agenda that..." Because right at this time, I'm feeling we need to get our garage doors up at the, at the, uh, uh, building, Reden Bridge Buildings, and there's things we need to do, and our, we're not, we're not, our, our day-to-day, if we hadn't gone and looked at the expo, we don't have any business anymore, and it just seems like...
That was a good morning though, wasn't it?
Well, it was great going out there, yeah. But we're really lacking on getting our business done, and that, that building out there needs a lot of attention, and, and we need to get started on some things, and I think we need to have time for the Commissioners to mention something on our agenda.
Is it a good time to do that, when we get back up there and do the unfinished business?
No, we need to, we just need to do it every week at a certain time.
That's what I'm saying.
Anytime, just as long as we have to put that in our agenda, that we have a time, five minutes or whatever, to make suggestions on the agenda.
All right.
And know what's going on.
Anything else for the cause today? Any announcements?
I'd like to read another quote. This is from a Supreme Court ruling in eighteen forty-four. "It was an unanimous decision commending and encouraging the use of the Bible in government-run schools." And here's the quote, "Why may not the Bible, and especially the New Testament, without note or comment, be read and taught as divine revelation in schools? Its general precepts expounded, its evidences explained, its glorious principles of morality inculcated? Where can the purest principles of morality be learned so clearly, or so perfectly, as from the New Testament?"
Is there any other announcements? My understanding is we'll meet back upstairs at one o'clock, is that everybody's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we will meet back upstairs at one o'clock.
I really didn't, I took that one, I'll, I'll accept that.
All those in, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?